I welcome everybody to the special sitting council meeting. Alright, with that. Five dollars down, last again. The pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands by nature. And God in this world, to be protected. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one in this world. Please be seated. Alright, City Secretary, we have a forum this evening with all city council members present. For the notice of meeting.
Thank you Mayor, members of this meeting was posted on September sixth by two P M.
Public comments?
None.
Alright, let's move on to public hearings. Take a moment. That helps a little bit. Alright. City Secretary, public hearings are starting at five thirty-one P E O. First public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh nine oh four. And ordinance making appropriations for support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty four. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Appropriating money to sinking, to a sinking fund to pay interest principal on the city indebtedness. Adopting annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none, moving on to public hearing B to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance. Twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash oh five and ordinance permitting fiscal year twenty twenty four dash twenty five. Proposed tax rate of point four three nine two oh five per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation fiscal year October first, twenty twenty four. Three September thirtieth, twenty twenty five for use in support of the municipal government of the city of Alpine, Texas. One here to speak on this. Seeing none, we're ending public hearings at five thirty-two P M. Moving on to public presentations. Presentations and recognitions, none, proclamations, none. Unity interest items. City Secretary, please set one minute on the timer. Okay, Mayor announcement, be sure to listen to Small Town Big Stories on K V L F ninety eight point seven at M L. And K A L P ninety two point seven at M L on Fridays, every other Friday at one oh five. The show will air this Friday at one oh five and also the adjacent Saturday at twelve thirty. You can also catch the show on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, SoundCloud. And this week, we are featuring Chris Mueller, which one of her songs. This show features an Alpine resident, someone who is new to the area or who was born and raised here, who has something to share about the past. And what's going on in the present and future, so it's really wonderful to get to know one another just a little bit better. Alright, City Secretary, please sit one minute on the timer, City Manager. Okay, City Secretary, please set one minute on timer for each council member, Councilmember Stevens.
So, uh, three quick items, Commissioner Stewart was telling us this morning, three items I thought I'd note for everyone is. We're gonna hire a new auditor, that will be Singleton, they're finalizing the contract for that. Second is they are getting new accounting software, spending seventy-five thousand dollars for the new system. And annual maintenance fee of thirty thousand dollars per year. And the other is, the, uh, they're spending their hot money on Big Ben ads. Because of the, uh, basin being closed, they want to make sure everyone knows that Big Ben National Park is not closed, just the basin will be closed on the month of August.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Escobedo. Um, Councilmember Nance.
I'll just note that we had a academy today, um, the cat approved the reappraisal plan. And the budget today.
Councilmember Martinez. Okay, Councilmember Stone.
Mayor, just a couple of items, of course, always until October seventh, we want to remind people to register to vote. Check if you're suspended, do all those things at L W B Texas spelled out dot org, Legal Women Voters is a great resource for that. Two, I had a very good, uh, weekend in Austin at Texas Tribune Festival. A lot of, of course, elected officials, candidates, politicos, everybody and their mother was there. And, uh, spoke to, uh, a lot of different folks there. Three, uh, important take backs and I'll be sure, uh, some of these places can be on discussions in the future, but. Talking about local control, obviously Texas loves to take things out of our hands, so we want to make sure that. Um, we have good, um, loud voices, um, and that with, uh, Scissor Blanco, Blanco's staff earlier today. To start that relationship back up. And, uh, sat at a great panel about emergency disasters. Uh, definitely something to think about in the future and bring that to more discussions. And then also made a really good contact with an old friend at the Trailers Foundation, they were out here, um. Just about a month ago, they're searching for, uh, nonprofit grant recipients. Uh, to find social mobility grants as well as scholarships, so I'll be sure to make some connections and bring that back to Alpine. So, I thank you all again for, uh, sending, sending me over there and, uh, had a really good time and of course came back with a little bit lighter of a head. Uh, as well, so, uh, as in more info, but, uh, got some hair knocked off, but, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, changes to posted agenda, are there any items to be continued or withdrawn? Okay, there is no consent agenda, so item B is not applicable. I O C, action items to be added to the consent agenda, once again, there's not a consent agenda, so this is not applicable. Okay, any tax sensitive items? Okay, moving on, consent agenda none, item number, consent agenda none. Reports and presentations, none, information and discussion items, none. So moving on to action items, City Manager.
Uh, thank you Mayor, the first item is action item A. To approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine dash zero four. And ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty four. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness. Adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
I need a motion.
So I'll move that we adopt the proposed budget for twenty twenty four, twenty five, twenty five fiscal year, which reflects the increase in revenue throughout profit tax revenues from the last year.
Hang on a second, I see. Alright, discussion, City Manager.
This is the second and final reading and just to recap, this budget does total seventeen million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. It's appropriating six million, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars to the general fund. The wastewater, water and sanitation fund is appropriating six million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars. The airport fund is at seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tourism is at eight hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, the gas fund is at. Two million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seventy-two dollars. And our debt collection for this next fiscal year is at fifty-one thousand, four hundred. It does include the addressing the compensation study for our employees. It also includes some priority projects that Panco has outlined, including utility billing software, steel coating can. Continued projects, a loader for the public works department. A backhoe for the water department, sunny clean water line replacement. And continued phase one improvements for the smart meters for the gas department. The budget is balanced with using minimal reserves and fund balance.
Councilmember Stone.
Awesome, um. Big packet here, so few things that go all over the place, I'm sure we'll jump around here, I hope everybody's got different parts of things. Um, future's general questions from last time. Uh, regarding to the amount that we're anticipated to bring up. Are you able to help me where I can find that, uh, from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four? Both revenue as well as expenses, I just want to see where we're rounding that up to our anticipation of the seven point five dollar per.
So if you're looking at the estimated fund balances. That gives you an estimate of where we potentially could have ended the year. This was put together in July.
Okay.
So, this is a projected year in base off of the expenditures and revenues collected up until the end of June. So we've had some larger items come in after that, so the projected, uh, estimated fund balance has changed. As well as the projected year in revenue and expenses. Uh, but it.
Leading to a page number that Air C met on. I'm guessing we're looking at this page.
Website, sorry, I have a digital copy, um, page fifteen, and we're starting with the general fund estimated fund balance. So that tells you that we were estimating to bring in five million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents. Like, so these are projected year in based off of the collections at the end of June.
Okay.
And there's, it's like, so that would be the general fund, and then each one has an estimated. Fund balance or net position, um, break into different class.
Is there a number like that's getting close to the group's numbers that's closer to the seventeen million or are we just?
We actually amended the budget in December, uh, twenty, uh, three, I mean, twenty-four. So our actual budget for twenty-three, twenty-four was sixteen.
Gotcha.
Sixteen eighty.
So it's going up slightly, cool. Okay, jumping into a little bit more, um, I wanted to bring to our attention that, you know, we need some extra work on, uh, leading up to the election with the. Ten, uh, different items that we're putting on the ballot for the city. Uh, as far as like outreach and education and so forth. Just wanted to see where that expense might go, um, and making sure that we are budgeting for that, uh, ahead of time.
So if you look under non-departmental, under the general fund, we do have a P R line item.
Okay.
Um, I believe it's at a thousand. Of course, there's no expense to utilize, uh, our website. That's obviously incurred already. Um, we've already started utilizing the radio, I was on City Talk last week and did a spiel on the upcoming charter. And we can also utilize the election line item, um, we don't have an estimated cost of what it will run. To have the elections, since we're not hosting them ourselves, we are going through the county. Um, which will be discussed partly on the seventeenth. Um, and of course, if we have to amend the budget to account for the additional.
Sure. And like, would we plan to do a flyer or a mail drop or anything like that? You know that those can be more than thousands sometimes, so.
So we typically utilize our utility building, uh, because it goes to all of our residents within, yeah. So that's a cost that's already budgeted within the utility department. And we could put in a flyer within the October, um, I believe at the end of this month, we have the upcoming, uh. Schedule, um, going in there, we try not to overpack the, the mail, where people obviously don't pay attention. And of course, we'll start pushing a lot on social media, utilizing, um, both environmental services and the police department website. And of course, we do have a couple more City Talks.
Cool, and could that be done the same thing for ordinance education? I know we've been emailing a little bit about a constituent that had some complaints about a dumpster being used incorrectly and so forth, and. Just making sure that we have voices.
We actually already do that.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and, and. Yes, we can do it more, but we do try to include everything, so we already do the ordinance updates, um, required through the paper every time we pass the ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, we also do have them on our website, if it affects, like this specific case, um, I do know that the environmental service page does include all of that information as well as our lists.
Sure, um, can you give me a roundabout what the newspaper would charge to put that pretty little graphic in, in the paper and say a quarter newspaper? I don't know if we want to plan for a few of those throughout the year.
Um.
Just an idea.
I don't know a quarter size, but we are in about a hundred and sixty-eight dollars per.
For the notice.
To which.
Yeah, those are kind of boring, I'm guessing a lot of us jump over while we see the notices in the paper. Sometimes graphics can be helpful to, you know, our, our creative sides or at least giving our attention a little bit different.
And we do utilize, she does put out flyers for all of the areas as well.
Sure, okay.
And that would come out of a different fund, that would come out of the, uh, waste, our water wastewater and sanitation.
Okay, and the last thing that I wanted to bring up, I saw that we are kind of like, um. Bringing similar expenses over from, say, the swimming pool. And then I'm kind of winking this into the splash pad, which I have reached out to the Big Ben Kids Parks Association to see. Who's running it now and if they've raised funds and if those are designated towards any projects. Um, we have obviously any anticipation on keeping the pool, you know, uh. It probably will have issues again next year like always, uh, do we want to, uh, you know, anticipate that in advance or make sure anything? Uh, that there could be changes or anything like that.
Um, as far as removing it from the budget or?
I would think, uh. Increasing since we might have to get people out there or since we try to, I know you tried to start earlier in this year. Sounds like we might even need to start earlier next year, um, uh, that might be for extra charges.
Um, not a charge is actually, um, because we send a lot of the high school career fair stuff. To promote it, but we actually have a designated, uh, recreation coordinator. And so we already have someone on staff who can reach out. This year, we did not have that person in place and we had two, three different people trying to juggle it. And then of course, the condition of the hole, the last minute trying to refuel stuff like that, which we won't have next year.
Good deal.
And so we don't foresee additional expenses. Um, I do foresee additional revenue, um, it'll be open more.
That sounds always good, um, last thing is just with the city employees, I know we're hoping that next month, we're gonna start looking into the, uh, the, um. Estimated or what, what is the, the, the report that we're getting back from Evergreen or whatever?
So it's a compensation study which will have recommendations, not actual you need to pay. They just provide the recommendation. Um, last week, I did have a meeting with them, um, our contact person's name is Kelly. And she provided in a spreadsheet with all of what we had been providing over the past couple months. Um, we are now updating to ensure all of the. You know, transpose numbers, dates, and all that are correct because that does impact tenure. And we're also making sure that the certification pay or differential pay is not included in the annual salaries. Uh, which it originally was because that is a separate thing.
Yeah.
Um.
Guessing those are kind of like, they're not a bonus, but they're treated like that kind of.
Yes, so it, that doesn't affect what the suggested increase or would be because it is a separate item.
True.
Um, in reviewing that spreadsheet, we've also had some turnover, uh, with some new employees, so we're making sure it's updated as possible because that will decipher what each of the employees are at. We're looking at finishing that this week and sending to them. And then she's gonna schedule another meeting to kind of come back with actual numbers. Um, they have different methods in looking at how they're gonna make their proposal. Um, from a, a completely ten-year, completely competitive or a combination.
And we'll probably get like. Each of those in some way, or are you gonna look for the best one to present to us?
Um, my preference is a combined. Um, because we are immediately located, uh, competitive market is a lot harder for us.
True.
Um, so we're looking at the ten-year and competitive, uh. And then of course, we've been looking through all of our job classification card, um, and updating those.
Okay, and last thing, uh, do you see that impacting this budget a lot since we plan to implement at least a phase one of that in the next fiscal year?
Believe it or not, I see it impacting almost certain departments.
Okay.
Um, which we can modify the budget down the road. If we want to save specifically within the budget, then we would implement it in the cases. Um, a little bit this year, a little bit next year, so we'd budget accordingly. Um, because we noticed the amount of corrections we're making this week. Um, one specifically is, you know, Daryl's here, Chief of Police, um, they showed him being Chief of Police from the day he got hired. So his tenure is incorrect.
Yeah.
So that kind of will fluctuate the actual increases in that, um, pay study. And so we're making sure that those are all correct.
That's interesting because I might see that, uh, years of service to the city could be a ten-year type thing, but I guess, uh.
So. What it's, it's years of service, but they're looking at also the, the position files, yeah. So you haven't been Chief of Police, you know, for thirty-two years, thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty years.
Yeah.
Um, so that does take into consideration. Um, and it also shows the growth within the city, are they actually moving up or reset? So the two important of the big, um, once they kind of presented a, uh, kind of a little bit of a draft, we're making, we're making sure it's accurate as well.
Sure, okay. Um, and maybe someone's gonna get into more of our water and wastewater, I'm gonna let that go around for now, but this one, let's take up the time.
Uh, I just have a question, uh, I was, uh, looking at the hub funds, uh, we have a lease, I guess, of all the hotels and. B and Bs that they, that they are registered. And, uh, many of those are on zeros. So, the, does that mean that they haven't paid a dues or?
So actually this past month, um, so when we put accounts in the, the system, we don't go back and activate them, we tend to just keep adding to them. So utilizing the master S T R list and looking at our actual expenditure or revenue that's come in. We went through and cleaned it up, this was as of the end of June. So, S T Rs don't always collect either. They may have an active account, but actually only keep it active so that one day they decide to rent out a room they can. So we've actually cleaned this up, we only budget currently for the occupation as a whole. So that includes all the hotels, all the S T Rs, any miscellaneous. Which is why when we look at what's budgeted for all these S T Rs at Seaver. When you're looking at the actual experience for twenty-three, we probably remove. Two, ninety percent of those zeros, because one, they're not an active account. Or two, they registered under one name and then we received a check under a different name, and so we have them in there twice and went ahead and.
Okay, we see even said that we expect more revenue this twenty twenty-five.
So you'll have to note that when we're looking at the revenue, we're also considering the use of, uh, fund balance. And so what we're predicting to bring in, um, is in addition to the fund balance. So that we can take all those extra projects.
So remember that we're talking in the past, we will hire somebody to. Uh, store bodies to change who they gave or don't gave of something like that.
Yes, and one of the goals for, uh, Councilor Nance, Gio and myself is that the T M L to actually look at all of those different softwares to see what's available. I know that Councilor Stone had mentioned Gatticus, um. Brannicus, um, and there's, there's a bunch of different ones. We budgeted sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand in actual, um, hotel collection. And all the prior years except for this year, we brought in closer to seven hundred and fifty. This year, even though when you're looking at the budget as a whole, it looks like we are under, um, and we're under because of the fund balance, we haven't utilized it. But we are in line with the six hundred and fifty thousand in collections. So this year, Chris, uh, Rujit is scrambling to advertise last night.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, and I literally reminded him to all that, we're so the questions.
Councilman. I just have one question on, uh, Evergreen and Mass Study. Uh, can you explain the difference, uh, so council only sets the salaries for U M G, I'm correct? So where will we be as a advisory board for Evergreen? Once that's actually done, do we pretty much just leave that in our hands?
So you'll approve the, the suggestion, you'll look at the presentation and then the packet that gets presented. And if it's presented with option one, you'll approve the option and we'll. So if option one says to give all the employees X amount for the year and you approve it, then we go back in. We'll do that process.
Do we not have any options at all?
Um, right now, the, the main conversation has been around, uh, one option, um, based off of the current information and looking at that mixed combination.
Councilmember Escobedo.
So when you, if I look at the budget, I was curious as to the new positions, are there, are they?
Yes, and those are the positions that were requested by the departments. So we're only adding a, a handful of new positions. Um, I know the street department would love ten new positions. But I also didn't want to over budget or pass the budget and be realistic with the ability to hire ten new people. Um, so each of the different departments, um, after speaking with them, we went in and we added. We added the additional records clerk and economic development manager, an additional police officer. Um, one additional full-time worker in the streets department and an additional full-time worker in the gas department. And then we transferred one of the finance clerks into human resources. So we're only adding five new positions.
So what, uh, are you proposing for the salary to the development? Is that a director or a manager?
It's a manager and, uh, we have it in here, it's sorry, that fits us.
So we, I mean.
And then the new positions that are being created would be considered the first level. And so they would be at the fifteen, because we are making the recommendation to change our short capital.
And what, I mean, did the parks clerk not, or meaning the parks department, did they not ask for a position and agree on it?
The response I got from the parks department was they did not be needing this for access. The wastewater has three full-time positions.
Councilmember Stevens.
Again, uh, question looks good, and I'll have one question relative to the motion that I made, because I don't understand it. It says, "An increase in revenue derived from property tax revenues over last year's budget. Even though our derived revenue on our budget shows two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars plus, help me translate."
So because of the adopted budget last year and the proposed budget this year, there is a need. Now, we've amended the budget to show the difference in that decrease in revenue, um, when we change the tax.
Okay, so I'm, all I'm looking at is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, two point four, twenty-four, twenty-five is two point two. So that was adopted versus proposed, that's my language.
Are you going to have the summary?
Yeah. I have more facts.
Have we changed the, remember we, I'm sorry, we amended the budget to reflect two point one for this fiscal year. Hold on, hold on, we need to get to that. Hold on. So the summary and what was actually adopted, then if you go to page. It's like thirty-six.
Yep.
We actually amended, which would be one, two, three, four, the two point one, and we're increasing the two point two.
I'm with you, so it is over last year's amended budget.
Yes, if you want to amend your motion, I'd like to.
Amend the motion to reflect that, please, to that. The doubt that proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, which reflects an increase in revenue derived from property tax revenues over last year's amended budget. Is that standing?
Yes.
I'm into a layman's to a layman's.
So what happened is the budget that was proposed last year was at, uh. Twenty, or seventeen point one million dollars, which had in that twenty, uh, two point four million dollars. We amended the budget after we adopted the budget in the October time thing. And took it back down to sixteen point eight, which reflected a tax revenue of two point one million dollars, not the two point four that was in the proposed budget.
Got you.
So, this shows adopted. And what we're referring to here is relative to. So this shows adopted, and what we're referring to here is relative to what was amended.
Got you.
So we just need a second on the amendment, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the amendment?
On that one, and so this Avalon is two point two oh three million, what was last year's, two point one what?
Two point one oh six nine six six.
One oh six nine six six.
What was it, you know, sorry?
Two million, one hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six.
So about ninety-seven thousand more?
Yeah, you got, that's exactly what you got, yeah. And that's why I was just trying to say, how do we go up or we're going down?
Sure.
I did. Yeah.
And what?
Is that ninety-seven thousand? I remember at our last meeting, he said the three point five percent increase was gonna be thirteen thousand, twelve something, right?
So that's the actual additional, um. So it's the hard part. That's the additional because of the increase in the breakups.
Oh, so that's all the increase in breakups, where's the other?
It would be the, the no new revenue brings in, and then there's a, yeah.
Let me layman's turn.
It'll be a good discussion next week when we go through this and the numbers.
I mean, I'll have to work with the numbers, but there is an increase on that, the two point two point.
Yeah, yeah. I'll come on, I think you just got a whole one beside me next meeting.
Any other discussion? Famous vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the city secretary, the amendment to the original motion has passed unanimously with all council members voting in favor.
One more comment. Uh, I just wanted to ask, this is like real early in the packet. The gas, smart meters, uh, the trial is going to Fort Davis, is there a reason to that?
They have a smaller number of accounts.
That's what I expected, and also we don't have to drive over there, is that maybe a reason as well?
Will say time on the meter being itself. Um, but they do have a smaller number of accounts and they have fewer residential and even fewer. So it's kind of a more affordable approach.
Yeah, and I know we might get some slack for that, but that, that is makes sense.
Okay, moving on to action item B.
Going to adopt the original amendment.
Oh, yes, okay, all in favor of the original motion as amended?
Aye.
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 Yeah, original motion as amended passes, City Secretary unanimously. All right, moving on to action item B, City Manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine dash zero five. An ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed tax rate. Of point four three nine two zero five per hundred dollar of assessed valuation for the fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. For use in support of the municipal government of the city of Alpine, Texas.
The emotion?
I'll move to approve the motion as presented.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, City Manager, discussion please.
So, um, as discussed prior, um, the truth in taxation, uh, form that is utilized to determine our current tax rate. Um, based off of all of the different options the city has, came back with the following information. Our no new revenue rate would be roughly, or not roughly, would be point four two two seven oh five. This is the rate that would be needed to collect at least what we're collecting for this fiscal year. The voter approval rate came back at point four nine eight two zero eight, that's the highest we can go. Um, and there is the possibility of being petition, um, to go out for vote from the taxpayers. The diminished rate is point four nine nine eight two two. This is the rate that was set that would bring in an additional five hundred thousand. Our interest in thinking rate was set at point zero one zero one nine eight. This is the rate utilized to bring in, um, what we would need to make our, um, interest in thinking debt payments for this upcoming fiscal year. Um, we're only paying fifty-one thousand four hundred, um, but the rate is that to collect at about ninety-six percent. So we should bring in a little bit extra just in case you don't collect the four hundred percent. The proposed tax rate after discussion with council is point four three nine two zero five. This has a set interest rate of point zero one zero one nine eight. And then of course, the, the remaining, uh, difference is for maintenance and operating of point four two nine zero zero seven. I really want the council to understand that when we're looking at the tax rate, the tax rate is only utilized towards the general fund operation. It does not affect or take into consideration any of the other operating funds, water, wastewater, sanitation, airport, hot, gas. Uh, so it's really kind of important to understand that difference. Um, our current appraised values at the time of the report was five hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. Last year, the appraised values, um, utilized to determine the tax rate were at four hundred and ninety-four, nine hundred and one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen. There was still roughly eleven point three million under protest. So there is a possibility that if those protests come back and we get that additional upgrade value, we would be collecting more. So because they're under protests, it doesn't get added as part of the determination on our tax. So when you're looking at the information and why we bring more of the difference in the appraised value, we'll bring in a little bit.
Counselor Stevens. Counselor Rescindia. Counselor Renance.
Couple things, uh, one, just I think it's the council might know where the de minimis comes from. The de minimis, that five hundred thousand dollars comes from, uh, you know, to you know, that, I mean. That five hundred thousand was fire truck exception, so small, um, cities that require a fire truck, half a million dollars or something like that. Federal levels couldn't even tie that community up for such, such as a video required or something like that. That's what actually exists. Um, one thing I was gonna ask you real quick, maybe, and this is cause you had to educate me on this last year, I'm still not an expert. Our sales tax relief. How does that work on our property tax side, where we were one of the only ones that voted in some form of sales tax relief?
No, so there are multiple cities across the state of Texas that actually, um, allocate their sales tax to relieve the property tax. So in nineteen eighty-eight, the city of Alpine authorized or went out to vote. Um, and had it where our sales tax made property tax relief. So when you're looking at the truth in taxation form, it actually has in there where we reduce. Our, our values by our sales tax, which ultimately reduces our no new revenue. Um, and then of course, our voter approval and all those get affected, the downturn effect. Um, it's something that was approved back then, um, that we take into consideration. So without it, the, the property taxes would be slightly higher, or the no new revenues are also higher. Um, this was something that was implemented to help the residents. So the more property, or the more sales tax we bring in, the, the, the more it helps the property.
She's actually looking at tourism and the, and the sales tax, all the tourism brings in is actually property tax relief for most. It's, uh, question that that was voted nineteen eighty-eight, when, when we were really at tourist economy. Uh, everything.
Counselor Martinez. Counselor, so?
Uh, just wanna put out there, what was our tax rate last year and what is, and then I want to issue.
Um, this year it is point four five seven, seven. And I'm gonna tell you wrong when we just go check. At, at five, all the numbers go out of my head.
Yeah, it's fine, and then this year it's point three, I mean, point four three nine two five. Do we have an estimate if we did keep it the same? Uh, what that would bring in?
Um, I do not have that with me, um, this is my.
Sure.
But I can send you that email.
Yeah, and then this is, this might be germane, just because we are talking about tax rates and money. Um, how much money are we transferring from saving, estimated saving from this year into next year? And my question is in anticipation that we start applying for Texas Water Development Board grants and other places that we can bring money in. Dallas, huge projects, but that by no means we can fund our.
So you're, I mean, I just wanted to get the clarification, so you're wanting to know what we would possibly under run?
So, yeah, there's two questions.
To build the park fund balance?
Yeah.
So this money shouldn't be tied to the water side.
Sure.
Um, because you're not raising property taxes to support the water department, that's why you have your utility. So when I look at the budget and what we're proposing, and, and it has changed, which on the eighteen, you'll see some of those additional numbers, no, sorry, the seventeen, you'll see some of those additional numbers. But when you're looking at the budget. It does look like we're going to under run. In the general fund. Eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four, that is not correct. Remember, these are estimated at the end of June.
Sure.
So we haven't started our zilco project yet.
Yeah.
So we've already had.
It's a half a million maybe, or?
We, yeah, we've already had large expenses.
Yeah.
So you're looking at a difference of closer to, to four hundred thousand.
My thought process is we're kind of building up some reserves for when we gotta go for those big grants, whether we're matching or putting ten percent, whatever the heck it is.
Yes, so these funds would be utilized primarily towards, one, employee compensation, two, um, payday.
Yeah.
And we did buy the hot box this year, what we did receive last week. Um, of course, the loader. So when we build up what we call funding balance, you also have to take into consideration that we need to have so much with, for operating. Um, so six months worth of reserves before you wanna utilize any of that difference. When you're looking at utilizing fund balance, you have to make sure that you're not utilizing it for reoccurring expenses. Cause then you can't sustain your budget year after year, cause you'll in all of your reserves. So ideally, when I talked about the budget and the tax rate, um, in our capital improvement plan, it was coming back with utilizing the reserves for our capital assets, the loader. One-time exits. Um, a new vehicle that we purchased instead of lease, one-time exits.
True.
So we can utilize that fund balance for those types of projects. Um, we did a presentation on the water side to discuss how do we utilize those needs to go after the big bets.
Okay, yeah, and I guess this is just a comment and I'm writing a lot too, but, uh, you know, we're moving this down from. Shortly point four five seven seven to point four three nine two oh five. Like, we could all argue, you know, if we moved it down to point four five zero or point four five four four nine. It's always gonna be hard to raise taxes. And we have some of the lowest taxes, I think, in a, you know, beautiful city in the state of Texas. Unpopular statement, uh, we could still all go out and say that we lower our taxes this year and not do it quite as substantially. Uh, maybe there's something to say, you know, setting out a set number, if we didn't decrease, or if we only decreased point, uh, one zero. You know, that, maybe those numbers might be missing too, but, um, that's all I'll say on that. And I, I fully plan to support, you know, the work here, but at the same time, just noting that you never really hit ten, ten. It, it's harder to raise taxes, of course, than lower.
I have a little question. On, um. Talking about track lanes and stuff, so is there no longer a track position?
Yes, the position's still there, it's current.
To the end of discussion.
One more question, right at the end of the weeds, again.
No, we, they took the tax rate.
The quick question is, when we looked at this last year, um, last year, there was a couple of years previous to that, that we did not base taxes at all. So we had banked those three years in. Is it, when we look at tax rates, we can hold three years of bank? Am I correct, or is it longer than that?
No, it's three years.
Yeah.
So you can, it's unencumbered, uh, taxes.
What would that be for us, if we, we had three point five percent this year?
So it does vary year, vary year.
It didn't do three point five percent this year.
No, we did definitely two. So what was what I call banked or put aside? Um, so unused increment rate for twenty twenty-four for this year would have been point four nine eight two zero eight.
A four nine eight two zero eight?
Yes, so that would have been the rate that we would have utilized. What we, the unused portion was point zero four zero two seven nine. And that's in the truth in taxation form.
So we still have a lot of the bank. And I'm not saying you can order two raised taxes, you know, we've always undermined, so that's like a great thing, that's, uh, we're sweeping the law, that's good. Um, but if, the only reason I mention that is over those three years, if we are raising taxes last year to some percent, this year three point five percent. Then that will slowly go away over the three years, so if we were going, if we did need to raise it at some point in time, it would need to be sooner than later, because. Those times when we were not raising taxes, the, are gonna phase out over the next.
So, um, the way that this form now has changed. Um, our unused increment taxes available for twenty-three was zero and for twenty-one was zero. The rate is based off of what was unused in twenty twenty-two.
Entirely, so if we were gonna do it, then it would be this year?
No. What if it is?
All right, just some attention now, um, and then last thing I was gonna mention was, we, uh. When we talk to, I always think it's good just to let the people know that we're shooting straight with them, that the tax rate is going down, but most likely their taxes aren't going up. I know me, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, my property values with our, the rate that we're likely gonna go in here, it's gonna go up about six, seven, seven dollars over here. So, not dramatic, I think it covers inflation and everything else, but it is a tax raise.
So decrease in tax rate will have a worse, worse. Even a little bit.
Okay, I mean, if they're buying with their home, they can go up, yeah. That would kind of lay off the tip to, to, to.
Anything else? Let's vote.
Aye.
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 Bye. All right, City Secretary. For the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, dash oh five, and ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Dash twenty twenty-five proposed tax rate of point four three nine two oh five per one hundred dollars of assessed valuations passed. So all council members voting in favor. Okay, moving on to executive reports, with ten minutes on the clock, uh, there's no city mayor report, City Manager?
None.
Okay, moving on to council member comments, thirty seconds on the clock, reach Councilmember, Councilmember Stone? Councilmember. Counselor Renance. Counselor Member Stevens? And none for me. So with that, and there's no executive session, we adjourn at six eighteen P P L.
Hey.
Hey, right in time.